Hi, how are you?
Good, how's it going?
Good.
How's everything?
Nice to see you.
How are you?
I'm doing good.
Good, nice to see you again.
Good, I'm with my friend here. Hello.
Hi.
I am seriously gonna move back there so now my head is in.
How are you?
Hi Dave. She has the church. My first sheet I wanted was right in front of Frank Mandala. But then when I saw where the camera was.
Nick, hell there. You know we're on. How are you?
Good.
Behind schedule here. Goodness gracious.
There, I know.
Oh, thank.
She's about that.
Just a wow. I don't know where they went. They were right in front of the lights.
Just gotta go to the bathroom.
Peter? And hello to the folks in the back there. I don't recognize them.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm here for my graduate class.
Fantastic.
Fantastic.
I hope we don't disappoint you.
Josh Stowman.
Yeah.
We're pretty fast. We're pretty fast. Like it? It's really happening.
We're rolling.
I wore my power stuff today.
We're rolling.
What? Did you change your seats?
No.
I know you did.
What are you guys talking about?
I swapped my chair, I know it.
Wow, it's like suction cup.
Yes, it is.
Hey, everybody please stand for the statue of liberty. Oh my gosh, the pledges are what I'm thinking.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We never failed to take.
You know, mix it up a little bit.
It's nice having an audience tonight.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published, and/or transmitted to Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district website. Roll call please.
Mr. Pravulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Here.
Mr. Valero.
Here.
Mr. Mandala.
Here.
Mrs. Dai.
Here. The meeting is open to the public for comments on items on the agenda. Seeing none. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How is everybody doing this evening?
Good.
Very good.
Fantastic.
It stopped raining.
It did? And now it's gonna get super hot?
Apparently we're having a very quick meeting.
I'm working on it.
All right.
Okay. Moving on.
Got a lot of reports down here. Vin's got pages. No.
Alrighty. Does anybody have any committee reports?
I can start. I actually attended the North End Spring Concert this morning, right here. I have to say, you guys have to look out for these first, second, and well, third and fourth graders. Quite a actors and actresses in there.
But not the kindergartners?
I didn't really catch that show unfortunately. I wasn't allowed in the building until the certain hour. So, there's only certain people I was able to see. But it was a wonderful thing and I think, well, music's doing great in our community, so hopefully they'll continue and we'll look forward to the next one. I believe there's a middle school coming up.
Middle school.
Next week?
Tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow. Tomorrow night.
It's at the high school.
And it's at the high school.
At the high school, yes.
And then the high school's on June 8th if I'm not mistaken.
I believe so.
And South End on Thursday.
Yes.
And the fifth graders actually performed last night at the middle school.
Yeah, they did.
And they did a great job.
There you go.
It was very nice.
Do you have anything? Go ahead. So I have a couple things. First of all, I was at the FSA, South End FSA, and just the big thing I wanted to take away is they're having something called a color run fundraiser. It is on June 4th. It's from 9:30 to 12:00 PM. Typically a color run, you do it, it's like a 5K, as you run by, you throw, you wear a white shirt and you throw color, color, non-toxic color at person running. And at the end of the run, you are decorated like a tide dye shirt or something like that. So they're doing it with the South End L R N three kids. Obviously they're not gonna do a 5K run, but they've took a permit out on Community Park and they're gonna make an arrange, you know, kind of obstacle course. And ever all the kids at South End are, you get people to sponsor you. And so I am going to do the color run. I'm gonna wear my white shirt and have the kids throw color at me.
Can we throw color at you?
You can throw color at me.
When is this? Just so I know.
It is June 4th at Community Park at 9:30.
He never ceases to amaze me. My shirt will still be white.
And so it's really a 5K, but obviously they're not doing it because of the kids. Usually do it oriented towards the whole community, but they're just trying it. And so far it's been very successful. They've gone, everyone's loving it. We've never done one before and they're kind of excited about it.
Excellent.
That's the one thing. The other thing is on Friday, May 5th, the APT at the high school and the Garden State Film Festival held the best of the fest at Cedar Grove High School. Vin was there, Chrissy was there. We screened seven short films from the Garden State Film Festival and two films from CGHS students. It was a huge success. We had a red carpet, step and repeat. We had banners. We also had a rap party. The Mr. Jimmy Di Stefano, who is English teacher, English? English teacher at the high school and Joe Morabito, who's one of our IT guys, helped the students make the movies. And we had a great screening. We raised $480. It's gonna go towards the APT. And the APT is gonna donate it for some sort of improvement at the high school. But I can't thank, Colleen Delora was involved, Chris Corso, Jimmy Di Stefano, and also Joe Morabito. So I was really excited about that. And one other thing I just wanted to mention was, because they don't get a lot of attention, I just wanted to mention the Cedar Grove Boys Tennis is very active. They have a lot of fresh faces this year. And it's a young team that's played really well in their division. This year they ranked eighth in the state tournament. Won the first round against the ninth McNair last week. And they are continuing to wrap up the end of this week. So I just wanted to highlight boys tennis as well.
Did you hit the girls lacrosse game yesterday too while you were there?
What the heck? Was that a shout out for tennis?
I can also tell you that both the girls lacrosse and the boys lacrosse are also going into their first ever state tournament.
Yes.
Well, how about the girls softball team is in the semifinals in the counties?
Well, I was thinking that the person who actually had a daughter on the team would mention that and bring it up. I'm bringing up some stuff that is not highlighted. So tell us about your daughter and what she's doing.
I just said, they made the semifinals on Friday at Seton Hall, 5:00 PM. Girls softball.
I'm done.
Fantastic.
I'm glad I'm in the middle.
Any other committee reports? Alright, well.
Really? You're gonna follow up with that?
No, I'm not. Even if I had a committee report.
He goes in right now.
I go last, I don't care.
Oh, yeah, actually, did you?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for the reminder. I attended Guys and Dolls last week at the middle school and it was absolutely amazing, I have to say. The kids did a great job. And an awful lot of work went into it. And without parent volunteers and teachers and everything, it would never be possible. But the kids did a great job.
They did.
So huge thank you to everyone. And it was great. They had, you could buy tickets online and then they had the, all the seating arrangement in the middle, in the gym. But I'm not gonna go into that. I'm gonna be quiet about that. But they were all lined up as far as the letters and so you knew where your seat was. And it was pretty exciting. So they did a great job though. The kids were pretty amazing, so.
I was impressed too, yeah.
Yeah, it was a good show.
Everybody, like, it seemed like they weren't nervous. I mean, they probably, I'm sure they were, but their performances were great. Nobody forgot their lines and they were like very professional. I was very impressed, yeah.
It felt very well, you know, like you said, you weren't nervous being up on the stage. All the kids seemed like they really were, knew what they were doing, for lack of a better way to phrase it.
Yeah, no, they did a great job. That's good.
Not like us.
What'd you say?
Unlike us.
Are you nervous still? I would've thought by now you'd be okay.
I mean, really.
I was gonna say, Pete, you've been here a long time. You're nervous.
Should Frank cool your hand and walk it through?
No, no, not today.
You're gonna be alright?
I'll be fine for now.
Alright.
I'll let you know next meeting.
Alright, is there anything else that I attended that I don't remember but you do? Alright, we're gonna move on then. We don't have any board presentations this evening. That's good. From the office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary under Minutes. Can I have a motion for B1 through B4, please?
So moved. Second.
Okay, B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of April 25th, 2017. B2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of April. B3 is a motion to approve the treasures report for the month of March. B4 is a motion to approve the Board Secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code that no line item account has encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriation in violation of the code. And further pursuant to the code, no major account or fund has been over expended in violation of the code. Any discussion?
Nope.
Roll call please.
Mr. Pravulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under bills, can I have a motion for B5?
So moved.
Second.
B5 is a motion to pay the listed bills that were in our packet, or the amount listed therein. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Pravulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Alright, there's a lot of things under the papers.
Are you going for the busto here?
Go for it.
Really? It's up pages and pages.
Yep, go for it.
That's her, right?
Just do it.
No. We have to prove how fast our meetings are.
Yeah, it's about speed.
No.
Okay, under business. Can I have a motion for B6?
B6.
All the way to B30.
Yes!
So moved.
Yes!
Good job.
I still have to read them. It only just prevents the numerous voting, I'm just saying. Was there a second somewhere?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. B6 is a motion to approve Emma Link's payment application number 13 and the amount listed therein. B7 is a motion to approve the generous donation from the Cedar Grove High School Sports Management Class to the All-School Council and the Black and Gold Club for the amounts listed therein. B8 is a motion to approve the Substitute Services LLC to provide calling, attendance, and reporting services for the 2017-18 school year. B9 is a motion to approve Ameriflex Benefits Specialist as the Cedar Grove Board of Education's Cobra. B10 is a motion to approve AM Consultants to conduct the annual fixed asset inventory update for the period ending June 30th, 2017. B11 is a motion to approve Lurch, Vinci, and Higgins as the Cedar Grove Board of Education District Auditor for the 17-18 school year. B12 is a motion to approve the annual agreement with Genesis Educational Services for the 2017-18 school year. B13 is a motion to approve Ahira Consultants to provide the following items for the, or following services for the 2017-18 school year as listed. B14 is a motion to approve NAETI to provide environmental consultant professional services for the 2017-18 school year. B15 is a motion to approve the participation in a joint transportation agreement with Essex Regional Educational Services Commission for the 2017-18 school year. B16 is a motion to approve the 2017-18 annual contract with the Northwest Evaluation Association. B17 is a motion to approve Handy Lift Service Company for the, to provide elevator service at the high school for the 17-18 school year. B18 is a motion to approve, I've read this before, the New Jersey Wild Geese Control to provide canine patrol for the 17-18 school year. It's a great service. B19 is a motion to approve K12USA.com for the 2017-18 school year. B20 is a motion to approve the 2017-18 tuition rates for out-of-district students as listed below. B21 is a motion that the Cedar Grove Board of Education accepts the recommendation of its insurance broker, IMAC Insurance Agency, and approves the award of a contract to Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield to provide health and prescription drug, I'm sorry, health and prescription drug insurance benefits to district employees for the 17-18 school year. B22 is a motion to approve an agreement with Delta Dental of New Jersey Inc. to provide dental insurance coverage for the 2017 through 2019 school year. B23 is a motion to approve an additional health benefit plan option through Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield for the 17-18 school year. B24 is a motion to approve the 2017-18 school year substitute rate of pay per DM as listed. B25 is a motion to approve Strauss Estime Associates School Policy and, School Policy and Regulations Consultants Annual Contracted Support Agreement for the 17-18 school year. B26 is a motion to approve the 2017-18 professional service contract with Vanguard Medical Group. B27 is a motion to approve Dial Pest Control for the 2017-18 school year. B28 is a motion to retroactively approve the location agreement with Bodega Studios and the Cedar Grove Board of Education for the filming of a commercial at North End School, which happened last week for a fee of $8,000. B29 is a motion to approve Dude Solutions to provide facility scheduling software for the 2017-18 school year. B30, where are we there? Motion to approve the first quarter unemployment payment listed with the following check number. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Fantastic. Roll call please.
Mr. Pravulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye to everything, but I'm abstaining on B24.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Alright, from the office of the Superintendent in Schools under Personnel, I believe, we have a superintendent's report?
Yes.
Good, so you can talk for a little bit.
Quickly.
Fantastic.
It's superintendent report.
Oh, superintendent report, hold on.
As we do once a month.
That's positive.
Quick recap of the superintendent's report. It's voluminous. It'll be posted on the website tomorrow. Read at your leisure. Okay.
But at least it's not the policies that need reading.
As we do, Cedar Grove High School student of the month. We love showcasing the talent. We have a talented young lady who's excelling in the business department. She's headed to Syracuse University where she'll study accounting or finance. Can't wait to hear all about how remitante she is doing next year at Syracuse. How about some other rock stars we have in the district? Don Quixote, Dylan Luke, selected as the Essex County Academic Award recipients. Just terrific young people. It was a pleasure spending the night with them and their families at Montezam Park. Let's not cut short Elise Fieron and Joe Rufo, who earned the Essex County Staller Athlete Awards a couple weeks ago as well. Quidos to these young men and women. About the academically speaking team at the Memorial Middle School. In their first JV performance, our fifth and sixth graders placed second in the overall competition. Fantastic.
Is that a new name for debate club?
Yes, it's sort of the debate club light, you know, it's the middle school version.
Not to date ourselves or anything?
Wow, you just did. You're old.
Oh my god.
Do we have a debate club at the high school? High school, yeah. So here's Mrs. Hill, who's the supervisor of the club. And those, and those rock stars that competed in the competition.
That's great.
Our final coffee talk has been postponed, so I'll speak with the board about when we're gonna reschedule that. We have so many wonderful things happening on our schedule. Up into scholarship awards night and academic awards night, so we will push that out to you as soon as we have a new date, time, and location, okay? So stay tuned. Final talk. It's been a great series of events. I want to thank the community for coming out and supporting myself and the board members throughout the year. It's open to parents of all ages, so stop in for the last coffee talk. Look forward to seeing you.
If we had better coffee, we might get a better turnout, I'm just saying.
Throw in some donuts, maybe you'll get some more people in there.
There's cookies. There's tons of them. There's coffee, there's tea. It's delightful. Of course, the annual contest is already in completion. It's hard to see the photos here, but that is our baseball field tonight. Spago is spectacular. The kids are just, it's just, so it's like, being hot. Of course, our traffic field area is also complete. And, you know, what can I say? It's been a long time coming, but just talk to the kids and how proud they are to be back on.
It looks so great.
And that's always.
It really is.
I have to tell you, it looks amazing. It looks amazing. If somebody had given the lights, we might be up there. These images. Did he get it?
He didn't get it. He didn't get the cue. It's a new guy.
It's okay, he's almost done. Let's just keep going.
How about the South End students are preparing. South End, their conference Thursday, they're preparing all kinds of things. Posture and tone production, vocal quality. The North End show this morning was just fantastic, you know, seeing those kids from pre camp through fourth grade. Right, Pete? It's just, really makes you proud to see what our new music teacher, Maggie Stroh, is doing and the Steiner team of teachers there. The kids were just rock stars today.
And I liked their outfits too because it was a western team.
It was.
They do, they did go out.
They had, everybody was all dressed up.
Dressed up, yeah.
And last but not recent, we want to recognize how we announced publicly for the first time all of the selected teachers of the year in each of our buildings. There they are. North End, Ash Pines, and Ms. Truett Circuits, and High School. Congratulations to all those that were nominated, and most particularly those that won. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Think she's gonna go for a gusto again?
I am.
I think she is.
I already looked at it.
Wow.
Hold on.
Under Personnel, can I have a motion for S1 to S24?
Yes.
Yes.
So moved. Second.
Right. S1 is a motion to approve the superintendent's report. S2 is a motion to affirm the superintendent's report on harassment, intimidation, and bullying from May 16th. S3 is a motion to approve upon the recommendation of the Negotiation Committee, the Memorandum of Agreement/ Collective Bargaining Agreement between the Cedar Grove Board of Ed and the Cedar Grove Custodial Association for the term July 2015 to June 2018. S4 is a motion to approve Jenna Sweeney, high school art teacher, at the rate listed therein. S5 is a motion to approve the voluntary transfer of Vicky Sinisi, high school principal slash administrative secretary, to North End effective September 1st. S6 is a motion to accept the resignation of Perry Note, district part-time custodian. S7 is a motion to accept the resignation of Dina Mikezner, a North End paraprofessional. S8 is a motion to approve Erin Jensen to receive sixth period stipend prorated from March to June 2017. S9 is a motion to retroactively approve the following staff members for supplemental instruction. S10 is a motion to approve payment for the student number listed, or student numbers listed therein to attend the annual CGHS project graduation. S11 is a motion to approve the West Essex High School senior Victoria Canela to perform community service at South End School. S12 is a motion to approve Verona High School senior Natalie Hall to perform a volunteer internship under the supervision of Kathleen Hall. S13 is a motion to approve the filing personnel for the summer 2017 extended school year program. S14 is a motion to reemploy and set the salaries for the tenured professional staff members shown below for the 2017-18 school year. There's a few pages of them. That's probably where I got it from. S15 is a motion, is a motion to reemploy and set the salaries for the non-tenured professional staff members shown below for the 17-18 school year. S16 is a motion to reemploy and set the salaries for the secretarial staff members shown below for the 17-18 school year. S17 is a motion to reemploy and set the salaries for the non-tenured secretarial staff shown below for the 17-18 school year. S18 is a motion to reimburse the following school-based volunteers for fingerprinting expenses at the rate listed therein. S19 is a motion to approve the following as a school volunteer. S20 is a motion to approve the following staff for summer custodial maintenance work at the hourly rate listed therein. S21 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. S22 is a motion to approve the following leave of absence. S23 is a motion to approve the following students for classroom observation. And S24 is a motion.
You can do it.
The whole thing?
Yes, please.
Okay, not a problem. I just, he said the whole thing, so I just want you to make sure you heard that part.
Yeah, we heard him.
Whereas, that's it? Don't complain, that's what I'm saying. Whereas the Cedar Grove Board of Education first seeks to support the identification of a future-ready schools New Jersey District Lead Team and created a team of FRS-New Jersey Specialists that infuse digital learning across multiple disciplines, including math, technology, media, arts, science, language arts, and career and technical education. Whereas the Cedar Grove Board of Education will support and promote the development of individual school future-ready teams that infuse digital learning across multiple disciplines, including math, technology, education, media, arts, science, language arts, and career and technical education. Therefore, be it resolved that the Cedar Grove Board of Education agrees to participate in the Future Ready Schools New Jersey Initiative. We hereby appoint Mr. James Walsh, IT Supervisor, to be the district's liaison to Future Ready Schools New Jersey, who will report to the board upon the completion of tasks for the certification program. We do hereby recognize that Mr. Michael Featherman, Superintendent, will be the responsible agent at the district level to carry out the district's commitment for its schools to participate in Future Ready Schools New Jersey. We agree to follow through with the district's commitment and support our schools to achieve certification through the Future Ready Schools New Jersey Certification Program. Any discussion?
Yeah, actually, I would like to at this time thank Mr. Featherman and the administrative staff for making the commitment to the Future Ready Schools Initiative. There's a lot of work there and we're very fortunate that we have a very dedicated and talented staff that's going to make this happen for us. And I'm really looking forward to October, the Workshop 2017 for the school boards, where we will accept our award for the certification, so, thank you again.
That's great. And if I may, not to lengthen this meeting, the longer this mutual activity, society going on.
Go for it.
I do want to express my gratitude to you, Mr. Valero. You know, as a new board member, you've come on and you've really embraced my interest and my concern for the district regarding this Future Ready Initiative. And Mr. Valero was the co-chair, or is the co-chair, of a very important part of the Future Ready Initiative. And so to have him along with myself and our team, going down to NGIT in Trenton, it's really been, it's been nice to work alongside one another, knowing that we both value this initiative, so I thank you for that. Thank you.
No, I also, as a board member to Vin, because Vin, you've definitely taken it on and I do admire it as well because it's, it takes a lot to go to those meetings and, and really take the time out of your personal life and, and you have and, you know, it's really helpful to us as board members to have somebody that does that and bring that information back. Because I wouldn't have known really as much as I do about this whole program if it wasn't for you bringing back the information, so, thank you.
Yes, sir. Keep everybody updated. Yes, thank you.
Alright, roll call please.
Mr. Pravulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under curriculum, can I have a motion for S25?
So moved. Second.
S25 is a motion to approve the following staff for curriculum writing. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Pravulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under contracts, can I have a motion for S26 and S27?
So moved. Second.
S26 is a motion to approve the following contracts for special education students as recommended by the Director of Special Services. And S27 is a motion to approve the use of facility agreement between the Cedar Grove Board of Education and the YMCA of Montclair. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Pravulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda. Go ahead, let's go stand up, yep, absolutely.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay.
It's on.
It's really for the community, not for us.
Got it, okay.
It's for the video.
Hi, good evening, I'm Therese Cordaro, twenty-four Brunswick Road. I'm here tonight to discuss the bylaws of the Memorial Middle School FSA and the term limits of the executive board. I've asked the president of the current FSA at Memorial Middle School for a copy of the bylaws on many occasions. I was told that I cannot have a copy since we don't do that, quote unquote. When I asked why, the answer was, we just don't. The only option in seeing the bylaws was to have a board member sit with me at a meeting as I read them, and as they were not allowed to leave the meeting. The term limit, as stated on the FSA website, is a two-year term. Members of the board have held positions well over their two-year term limit. The current president has served five years on the MMS FSA, also holding concurrent positions of secretary, treasurer, VP at South End and the high school. The vice president there has served three years in multiple positions, also serving a concurrent position at South End. The treasurer has served three years in the same position. The corresponding secretary has served three years, and the recording secretary, two years. I sent an email to the board president that I was interested in joining the board in October twenty, October two thousand sixteen. Curious about the process, I was told by the president that if no one shows interest in joining the board, the current board then has the option to stay intact. This is clearly not the situation. In April, I was denied by the current board president and told there were no other candidates that showed interest. She then contradicted herself when she told me, quote, that she wanted to keep her current board in place because they have a close relationship, good communication, and respect each other. When I questioned the process, I was told that the current board gets to vote in new members, which when you have an agenda to stay, no one would ever have a shot at getting on the board. That was the third excuse I got. It is unethical and irresponsible for the president and the other current members of the FSA at the Memorial Middle School to ignore the bylaws only to serve their personal gain. The purpose of term limits and the bylaws is to ensure the safety of the organization, mitigate risk, and prevent liability. Aside from the FSA board not adhering to the bylaws, they also do not approve a detailed monthly treasurer's report, detail. As far as I know, a report is not even prepared, as it is not available on the website or at the meetings, and the FSA expenses are not made available to the public. At a minimum, a report of checks written should be available at the FSA meetings or posted to the FSA website. As a parent and member of this community, I believe that the FSA must operate in full transparency. They must publicly disclose the organizational's bylaws and be held accountable by presenting monthly financial reports like any other organization. At the conclusion of this school year, until there is full transparency by the MMF, MMS FSA board, I believe they should not be able to hold their meetings in any of the district schools and suspend any further solicitation to the parents of the middle school. They need to follow the bylaws and allow other willing participants to come forward and know they are afforded the same opportunity on that board. The purpose of the FSA is for teachers, parents, and administrators to come up with creative ways to fundraise. These fundraising efforts add to our children's school environment and learning experience. We advocate our no bullying platform on a daily basis to our children, so why would we allow this to happen to the parents in this district? As parents and educators, it is our responsibility, our responsibility to lead by example. We must teach our children, many of those that will be future leaders, that rules, bylaws, and transparency are important factors in achieving success in life. Did you have any questions?
I have, this is, I mean, I've heard only bits and pieces of, I never really underheard any of, I never heard that whole thing before.
There's more than that, actually, but I didn't want to get into all the details.
So my, my first response is, do we as a board of ed have any jurisdiction, I'll use the word jurisdiction, I don't know if that's the right word in this case.
Or what's our role?
Our role over FSAs, and if we do have a role in that, then I would request that we look into what's really going on with the bylaws and, you know, if this really is happening. I don't know if we have that say for that role. It's unfortunate if this is what's really going on, because in all the years, you know, that I've, you know, been involved, and it's been many, as you can see, I got my little pin for ten years, no.
You've got at least another six.
In my eleven years, I know that that has been followed, those bylaws, in every school. I've seen the changeover, and I am not a part of MMS anymore, so I'm kind of surprised to hear that people have been in the position that long. So, that would be my reaction to this, and again, I don't know if we have a say over that, because it's not a school sanctioned type of organization.
Agreed, and I've done a little research on it, that you don't have much in terms of power, for lack of a better word, but the two things that I mentioned, suspend their solicitation to the parents, and, what's the other thing? Oh, no attendance in the schools, they can't have their meetings in the school district at all. I mean, what's to stop me from tomorrow going out and starting my own FSA? Tomorrow? I could come into the school, you as the school board and the principal and superintendent should have no reason not to allow me to run concurrent with them, and then we have parents, then we have different presidents, then we have parents, you know, fighting against parents, like who are we going to donate to this month, who are we going to do that? In the end, it's stuff makes, it's, the kids suffer, right? And we don't want that. And I do want to also dovetail with the fact that I know that there's a lot of hard work going on. The problem or issue for me is simply only that you have to step aside and let someone else have a chance. Why not? You can't just stay because you want to stay, because you have a child, because you've managed to be there for three children going through, circulating through one school, and then concurrently be on another board and another, two other boards in two other schools. The money, it's just, I was a junior women's club, I was the actual treasurer, so we don't, you don't usually keep a treasurer in place for that long. Again, these are things that we don't know because the bylaws are not public in any way, shape, or form for me or anyone else to read, without someone looking over your shoulder at a meeting while you read them. And even that, I had a hard time getting someone to tell me that they were at the meetings. These bylaws all of a sudden showed up at the meetings, and I've been at the meeting since January.
And a board member sat with you?
Oh, no, she didn't sit with, she offered it to me.
They mean FSA board, not us board.
Oh, no, no, sorry, just to clarify, when I say board.
President, and it in no way is me?
Nope.
So I just want to make sure that's.
Sorry. I tried to say MMS FSA as many times as possible.
I was going to reiterate.
Right. So it's, uh, it's, there's definitely been a play on how to not be transparent.
Are there other parents that feel the way you do?
Sure. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It's not a matter of having other parents stand up here, and there's a lot of divide, obviously. I'm actually friends with some of this, I thought I was friends with some of those people on the board, but to stand behind that, I would, I wouldn't teach my daughter that, let alone stand behind that in this district, not this district, I'm a front seat driver, not a backseat driver. So, if something's wrong, and I think that's the issue, a lot of people won't stand up and talk about this, because they don't want to challenge the current board, because that board just continually rotates from one school to another. So.
But I guess what's important for us to understand is what our role is as the board of education members.
Agreed. Sure.
So I guess that will be something really, Mr. Featherman, we have to take to a next level or discuss further, I mean, I really don't know.
Yeah, well, as I sit here, I don't know the answers to your specific requests or recommendations that we do not allow them to use the schools, nor do we allow them, or we rather suspend solicitation to parents. We're hearing that request for the first time, so we'll have to take that back and have that discussion. I can say that the MMS FSA board has done a tremendous job, as I think you would agree with moving the needle and supporting our, our teachers and administration, and most especially those kids. You know, it's an interesting discussion we're having, because there aren't a whole lot of people standing in line to serve on these executive boards, as, as these elected officials will tell you, there's not a whole lot of people looking to do the work that you're seeking to do. And so, you know, you and I have had discussions, and I've had discussions with the board president of the MMS FSA.
Thank you.
And, you're welcome. Trying to keep a neutral position on this, because obviously, our, my perspective and, not speaking for the board, but our perspective is keeping a healthy balance between the good work these volunteers are doing and, you know, making sure fiscally they're responsible and adhering to bylaws. So, we're going to take this discussion back and, if necessary, seek counsel on, on your requests.
Thank you.
I can't speak for the board and myself, I don't have a response to your specific requests at this point. But thank you for coming forward.
No, I, I, I thank you, because like I said, I didn't know all the details, you hear bits and pieces, but I never knew the details, and, you know, I, my initial reaction is if there are bylaws, why?
Because I'm sure those bylaws show a term limit.
Oh, they all do.
Term limit is expired.
I know from South End, I know from when I was involved in South End, they, they definitely have term limits in them, for sure.
Right. I don't know that this is something that we want to represent as a school district. People just decide to not adhere to the bylaws. I don't know. I mean, I, no, I do know, I do know that it's not the right thing, just, what if you didn't leave your seat, Vin, you know, after your term is over? I mean, you just, I'm not going to leave, right? Because you are all trusting of each other, that's not a reason. You know, other people want to have a, a chance at that, and it's just, it's not fair. So.
I, I think it's unfortunate that it came to this, I'm hoping that we're all going to be able to come up with a resolution that's going to.
And I have to commend Mr. Featherman, because I did reach out to him, and he did try to mediate and, as best he can without, you know, so, and that came to no resolution, not on my part. So, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? One of these days, Josh, he'll get up there, I know it, so, all right, I close that portion of the meeting. Announcement of future meetings, June thirteenth, North End, here, seven PM, eight PM regular meeting. June, any other date in June is to be determined, we have to kind of talk about it as a board as far as availability and the necessity of having a, a second June meeting, so.
Guess I really, we'll go back to Mr. DeVito on that one.
Well, wait a second, so, we're June thirteenth?
Right.
That one's on. Yeah, that one's on.
No, I know that, but it was originally the sixth, right?
Right, right. It was going to be the sixth and the twentieth, and then the sixth is the, help me, night, it's the scholarship awards night. And so, we figured it was not a good night to have a board meeting that night.
Okay, no, that works, the thirteenth works.
Okay, so we have to discuss the second, the necessity of a second meeting, and if we do have one, when it's going to be, so we'll get back to everybody on that one, I know everybody will anxiously want to hear that so they can.
Well, wait a second, wait a second, we, no, 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 we should, we need one, because we have been doing goal settings later, and we're really supposed to do them at the end of the school year for the following school year. So what we should be talking about is, we really do need that meeting.
Okay.
We need a meeting for the end of June, because that should be our goal-setting meeting.
You just like to see us more often.
No, 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 because I really don't want to come back in the summertime like we've been.
You already are, yeah, we have meetings in July and August set already.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, did you not get the memo?
Okay, so nobody needs to hear about Mr. Mandela's schedule, so we will get back to you on our meeting, but definitely on June thirteenth, so we'll see you here, all right?
Hit the gavel, hit the gavel.
Any, that's it, okay?
No, I have another say.
Motion to adjourn for this night?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Yes.
No discussion. Roll call please.
We love you.
Mr. Pervulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.